Okay, it is Tuesday, March 15th, 2022. We'll call a meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
I got time flies when we lose an hour.
They might have reprinted one if they.
Okay. Minutes and reports received and filed.
Yeah, we have the treasures February 2022 reconciliation report, and then we have the collectors February 2022.
Okay, Commissioner Committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
Uh, let's see, tomorrow we got a camp of board of directors meeting. Also got on there something about Eric Landworth's birthday. You still having birthdays?
Uh, they're battery.
Happy early birthday, bud. Uh, Chamber Connections Thursday. We got the Bardsville Knights Columbus Fish Fry Friday night. I think they have one at the Knights Columbus here at Jeff City. They still have one on Elks or Eagles, I mean, on Missouri Boulevard. They have several of them.
There's fish fries everywhere.
Okay, and then uh, got the Board of Realtors Political and Economic Responsibility Meeting Monday. That's about it till Tuesday.
On Thursday, Heartland Port meeting is scheduled for the Commissioners of Heartland Port and a Salute to America meeting scheduled as well.
Okay, I, tomorrow I have a bank meeting, a bank launch. Friday is the Juvenile Advisory Board meeting. Next Monday, there is a Vietnam Veterans Recognition Ceremony out at the DAV. I think Vicki Harker is going to be the speaker, so I'm going to that. And that is all I have. Commission comments. Bids and contracts. Contract award of Darby Place Road Stormwater Improvement Project number 2020-202-2.
So this is for the bid award signing of the contract for Darby Place Stormwater Improvements. The low bid was $37,624.58. Engineer's estimate was $74,833. Bids were open on Friday, March 11th, and GWH Landscape Contracting LLC, Redlow. Project involves adding a pipe to address runoff from a lot running into Darby Place. This pipe will connect to the existing stormwater system in the subdivision. Public Works Department recommends awarding the base bid.
Quick question to the engineers. When, when the bid comes in that far off of engineer's estimate, do you drill into it to see what, where the big differences were?
Yeah, we looked at it. I, I think this is a local guy who just really hooked the bid, so.
Okay.
But yes, we do check it and see if there's any discrepancies.
Yeah, I think that y'all have learned to get us ready for the worst case scenario too, a lot of times. And that way, if it does come in.
It's a little interesting to estimate projects right now.
It's very interesting, I bet.
And then GWH, they did the project on my point. Did a very good job, so.
Okay, well, glad to have them.
I'll offer a motion to award the contract of Darby Place Road Stormwater Improvements, project number 2022-202-2 to GWH Landscape Contracting LLC.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have any unfinished business?
Thank God.
Thank y'all.
Signing amendment with Buy Incorporated.
So we signed this amendment about a month ago with Buy Incorporated to extend their services out until the end of June. They provide electronic monitoring services for pre-trial and then over at Pringer. On the first amendment, we noted both agreement numbers on there, but they actually needed to be their own two separate agreements. So today I'm just needing approval to sign both agreements, once for pre-trial, once for Pringer, to extend it until the end of June.
This is the Buy Incorporated one?
Yes.
Okay.
We talked about this yesterday or earlier?
End of the week, last week.
Right.
All right, so I'll make a motion to sign the amendments with Buy Incorporated for contract number 020619CH1 and 050319CH1.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, signing of agreement with Jefferson City Regional Economic Partnership.
So we had the presentation last week, and this is our, what, second quarterly payment this year?
We haven't made any payments this year yet.
Okay, the first quarterly. And that's how the agreement is written up, so.
We budgeted 120, 120,000 in the 2022 budget for this, right? And the first quarterly payment would be 30?
And then for clarification, this is economic development, not the lobbying services.
Correct.
I'll make a motion that we sign the agreement with JCREP. That's the Jefferson City Regional Economic Partnership that covers the year, calendar year 2022.
Second.
Okay, any discussion, Mr. Williams?
Is this close enough?
Yeah, it's just recording it. It's not amplifying or anything.
I think we ought to look, take a little look at the history of the Chamber of Commerce, and that's what this is. Don't have any doubt about it. This is the Chamber, Jefferson City area Chamber of Commerce. There's been three major proposals by the Chamber in the last 10 years or so. One was the transformation. Sambushman was the treasurer, spent $80,000 and lost, 60% no vote. I was active in that. A lot of people gave me credit for it, but I don't think I deserved it. I think it was caused simply because the Chamber of Commerce was and is out of touch with the community, the citizens. Then there was county zoning, oh, the most dishonest campaign in the history of Cole County. There, the, the, um, Chamber wanted us to think that it, that strip joints were just imminent, gonna happen any day. Do you know of any Jeff Helscher in Cole County right now?
Strip joints? Why are you asking me?
Because you're the most likely to know about it.
I was afraid you'd go say that. No, I don't have a clue up there.
Of course you don't. And there wasn't a chance then either. It was just a scare tactic of the Chamber to try to get control of county zoning. It's gonna be a planning and zoning commission, and it's gonna be full of real estate agents and Chamber members, which is probably the same thing. Now, the last one was a tax to save Capitol Mall, use tax. Well, that was like a horse at a rodeo, come out of the chute, take two steps and fall over. I'd ever had a chance in the world. Could it be that the Chamber of Commerce is out of touch with citizens? I don't think there's any doubt about it. The Chamber Mayor appointed Ron Fitzwater and Ken Hussey to, committed to change the city charter. They tried to sneak Proposition P to allow Chamber members who were also council members to vote for giving the Chamber money. I challenged it, I told them the obvious, that that was a conflict of interest, absolutely wrong. And I invited Ron Fitzwater, the sponsor, to, to talk to me, to, to ask me a question or whatever. He, he crumbled like a stack of bricks in a tornado. Never defended it, never said a word for it, put it on the informal calendar so he didn't have to defend it, and never heard from again. Of course, he's a coward. I want you to know that, that Ron Fitzwater is a coward, and as is all the committee or Chamber of Commerce people. The Chamber is out of touch with people of Cole County. If the citizens were allowed to vote on giving money to the Chamber, it would be crushed, crushed immediately. The unemployment rate of Cole County is 1.9%. You can look on any website you want to, 1.9%. 5% is considered full employment. Chamber knows they're not going to attract new jobs. They don't even, uh, give that as a reason for getting the money. They want the money so they can direct money to their members. Most recent example, and a perfect one, is strikers. The building was built, it opened within two weeks of the, of the meeting giving, abating the taxes of the, of strikers for 25 years, 25 years. Can you imagine that? That's ridiculous. That's not even realistic. That's unfair to citizens who pay their taxes. And they also pay for the services that the strikers receive for police and fire and roads and schools and everything else. Loyal Chamber member Ron Fitzwater called it seed money. It's a little slate for seed money, don't you think? When the building is already built and ready to open? He also used the Capitol Mall as an example of success. Well, I wouldn't wish that success, if you want to call it that, on the strikers or anybody else. You know, the Farmer Brothers making out fine, they're raking off 2% of everything that's sold at Hy-Vee. But the Sears closed, as I told the council it probably would. The rest of the, the mall is, I believe, more empty than full, the stores. If you haven't been in there, which you probably hadn't, very few people have, you should wait, walk down through there and, and see if you can count as a, as a success. I don't think so, not by a long shot. I was working there part-time when the farmers bought it, and I believe there are fewer employees now than there were at the time they bought it. Like I said, they're getting their rake off from Hy-Vee. They're also getting the rent from the, what was the old Sears wing, which they closed off. Dillard's is a shell of itself. Penny's has been in bankruptcy, I'm not sure if they're out or not, but they're, they're not doing that great. And I think, I don't think that's an adequate example. I think Fitzwater was just trying to mislead us. Either that or he's woefully uninformed. The Chamber has a very valuable ally in the editor of the News Tribune. And, and he's just like him. As a matter of fact, he's a member of the Chamber. Remember, you did this last year in March. Do you know when it was reported in the News Tribune? October. And the only reason, he, he just mentioned it, wasn't reported, not what it deserved. It was, uh, just one sentence in a story about arguably something, something else. And the only reason he did that is because I wrote his boss down in Little Rock, or the owner of this newspaper, and told him that, that this was not right, that he should report it. So I don't think you guys can plan on the Chamber or the News Tribune not, not reporting this. I bet you were figuring on it last year, weren't you? That was a typical cheap Chamber trick. A little later, about that time, he start, started to quit printing my letters, letters to the editor. Not just quit printing them, quit acknowledging them. I'd email them, as I always had done before, and it would just go into the, like the black hole in the sky somewhere. Well, he had a cheap Chamber lie to excuse it. I didn't believe it for a minute. But I wrote, been, I've been keeping the mail hot between home and Little Rock. And all of a sudden, they're welcoming my letters. And remember, this is all from a Chamber member. Let's look at this contract thing, amendment, agreement. Whereas county desires to continue to promote the prosperity, economic betterment, general interest and welfare of Cole County, our county of Cole. Well, there's some people making out real well. Farmer Brothers are, all the places that you've abated their taxes, they're, they're doing just fine. Rest of us, well, we had to vote a special tax to, for law enforcement. We're paying act, we're, taxes, we're doing our part. The other day, couple of weeks ago or so, I drove by the Central Electric Building, the new one. It's cold, really cold. There's a guy about three floors up on the ladder, working, I don't know what he was doing. But I got thinking, he's working really hard, and it's cold, and he's probably endangering his life. And he pays his taxes to you. You give it to the Chamber, and they try to make more taxes and get, give, take it for themselves. This is crazy. They give it to a strikers that doesn't need the money. They obviously don't need the money. You give it to Jefferson City Medical Group because they're crowded, and they have a lot of business. And I have appointment over there Thursday, and I know that's true. If they're busy, that means they're making a lot of money. And I don't know anybody making more money than, than, uh, medical facilities. So, you know, this is just a farce. This is just a, the Chamber giving tax money to everybody, to their members. They're not going to get any new businesses. So they're just away, just like transformations, just like Cole County zoning, just like the use tax. They want to get their hands on our money. And our money is not being spent for our roads and our Sheriff's Department. I heard the other day that the sheriff was having trouble getting officers because he said he was paying so much. This came from a posse member, so I think it's probably pretty accurate, big supporter of the Sheriff's Department. So there are people making out well, but we who work and pay the taxes aren't, aren't it. Okay, accounting and reporting. Partnership shall submit to the county a separate report, that word was left out, of economic development expenditures, including the specific use of the county's contribution and the progress made in economic development on a quarterly basis. As last time I looked, there were four quarters in a year. How many reports did the Chamber or Partnership, whatever, how many reports did they make? Right here, zero. Now, I know there's a cheap Chamber trick, a Chamber lie coming to justify that. And I saw it came from your lawyer, so I guess that they consider it legal. But I don't consider it right. To me, a report is something I can hold in my hands, and it's not just to you, it's just to the rest of our, our citizens. The people are paying the money. We deserve to have that information. And I didn't put that in there, you did. But then you ignore it. Well, it's the Chamber. Partnership shall publicly advocate in all parts of Cole County and to all boards, commissions, and councils for pro-growth policies. Here's what that amounts to. We pay money to you, you give it to the Chamber. The Chamber is authorized to take advantage of citizens at any point that they can. And that's exactly what they're doing, and that's exactly what they're gonna do. So what does that leave, leave you? Well, I think for once you ought to do the right thing. Don't vote for this. Don't, don't give them the money. I have, I live on a road that would like to be paved, and it's grown tremendously in the years we've been there, number of houses. I, I know someone I was talked to, I had one in mine in western part of the county, that they want, the school buses kept getting stuck, so they wanted it paved. Tried and tried, as has the people on my road, Shepherd Hills Road, if you wonder where that's at. It's partly paved, and then it turns to gravel. That's where your money should be going, not to your buddies in the Chamber of Commerce, not to the liars in the Chamber of Commerce, which is pretty well, takes care of the whole organization. Not to Ron Fitzwater and his campaign, not to editor of the newspaper and his, uh, attempts to hide and shield the Chamber of Commerce. And another shield that I expect, this is the Chamber, Chamber way. I'll go sit down, you'll vote for it, and never give a word why. That was what Fitzwater did when I spoke to the city council, until I moved. And then he came up with these gosh awful lies about the Chamber being a, I mean, the mall being a, uh, example of success. So I think we deserve to know why you're giving money to the Chamber of Commerce, they're using it for their own members, and they'll probably come up with another way to get money, another tax increase. By the way, you shouldn't be giving money to political entities, and that's all they are, a self-serving, a special interest group. So I hope I've remained calm enough here. My wife kept saying, don't get mad, don't get mad. Well, I feel very strongly about this, because this is just unethical as it can be. Now, who's gonna vote for that and why? I'd like an answer.
What we are voting on is not the Chamber of Commerce.
Oh, come on.
It is not the Chamber. This is an entity that's broken off from the Chamber. And as far as the law enforcement tax, that was a city tax. As far as strikers abatement, again, that was city. That was not us.
You're giving money to the people and giving them authority to advocate for it. And if you cut it off, that'll, if you cut off the water.
Who did we give money to, to?
Well, the Chamber of Commerce and the.
We didn't give anything to the Chamber of Commerce.
Who'd we give it to?
The JCREP is totally separate.
Totally separate. You know, it looks like to me they're the same people.
They're not.
Looks like to me it's in the same building.
Luke Holt, they're moving, Luke Holt Snyder was actually with Department of Economic Development.
You know, I've heard cheap, cheap Chamber lies before, and this is one of them. And if you're gonna think you're gonna some kind of fool me into thinking this is not the Chamber, you're wasting your time. I know it, and you know it.
So when we add strategic, that's what they also recommended, is that you have a separate group doing this.
Who recommended?
Strategic Consulting, does our previous economic development.
You know, I could care less, this is another cheap Chamber trick.
You didn't come in, argue against theirs being renewed and saying they were part of the Chamber, and this is the exact same thing. This is totally separate from the Chamber of Commerce. The JCREP came in, and one of the things we told them was, is, look, we will put some money into this, but you have to have some private investment, you have to have some skin in the game. These guys went out, the committee went out and garnered a ton of support. I don't know the dollars. Last year, we really didn't get any reports because of COVID. And they were establishing the JCREP, so there wasn't a whole lot to report at that time. So now we're actually seeing some progress. That was kind of the problem before, when we stopped doing it with the Chamber, was we weren't seeing progress. We were more in a survival mode, and we needed to see some progress. So we went a different way. We found somebody, they made a recommendation to do a different, separate group, and that's what they did. They formed a committee to do this.
Looks a lot, a lot like the Chamber to me.
Just gets better glasses, I guess.
You're just, you're just, you know, trying to make, just like the News Tribune, trying to make an excuse for it.
Who was up here and took the money from the Chamber to try to make some changes? So do you think I'd be sitting up here cheering for them?
I think you'd be, I think you.
I'm gonna sit here and hold everybody accountable, just as I would with anybody else's tax money.
Oh, I bet, come on. So you, you, you didn't, where were those four reports that were supposed to be, be here last year?
Last year, because of COVID, we weren't really having any kind of in-house reports, and they were establishing the JCREP. All they had was a committee. There wasn't any kind of progress.
Why was that, why was that, why was that in the agreement?
How was that in agreement?
Why was it in the agreement?
That they don't have to do a quarterly report if they have nothing to report?
That's what I figured.
They were here last week giving a report, sir. And before that, they were still in the organizational state. So we have had a report, uh.
Luke was hired last October and November.
Yeah, he hasn't been here, he hasn't been here.
That's why we got the quarterly report.
It said quarterly reports. I don't know if you think you're gonna convince me, but you're not.
No, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna agree to disagree, so.
Well, I think that is, what we're disagreeing about is what's honest and what's not. You're taking our money, giving it to the regional commerce thing, not requiring them to report what they're doing, as you said you would, and taking our money and just giving it away to your friends.
We're as transparent as you can be on this. Go look at the Chamber's money and see how much money is going to them. Where does the check go to?
Hogwash.
And see how much private money they've had.
How much have they had?
Uh, thinking we had, you know, close to half a million, I thought, was in that.
Well, why do they need your pedaling a little 120,000?
Because we're a partnership here. We want to have people.
I know who the partners are. The Chamber and the Council Commission partners just like that.
So we have somebody coming to town wanting to do some kind of project. Who do you send them to?
What?
Who do you send somebody to if you want them to have somebody to go to, to start a project or to bring a business to Cole County? Where do you go?
How many businesses you think are gonna come to Cole County? Who's gonna spend five or 10 million dollars to build a building and put in a factory with an unemployment rate of 1.9%?
Well, that's why they're working on workforce development too. So that's some questions that we have the JCREP working on.
Well, they're not, they're not gonna.
Who's gonna come here if there's no jobs here? Who's gonna bring their business here if there's nobody to employ? So it's a cart and a horse, which one is, who's gotta get out of first?
Aliens from Mexico or aliens from Mars, they're not gonna have anybody here.
I guess we'd send them to your house.
And Cole County has not had a big employment problem in many years. Now, you look on a chart, which you can look at on your computer, and there've been a short couple of, uh, raises for very brief times, and, and 2020 was one of them, which I guess was COVID.
Okay, so you look at that.
And what I'm doing is accusing you of being dishonest, of you of feeling a dishonest entity that, that is not helping the rest of us, and is not going to. A dishonest entity that is giving money to their own members.
So we don't have places for business to come here because we don't have employees, so that's why we're working on sports venues. Bring the games here to Cole County, they'll still spend their money, heads in beds, so it's things they preached about, instead of us having to go to St. Louis, Kansas City, or even out of town.
Yeah, I know, somebody's gonna come to.
We keep our money and your tax money here locally.
To baseball games here, instead of going to St. Louis, to St. Louis Cardinals games. Come on.
Have you been to a Renegades game yet?
No, I haven't.
Okay, so you need to go check one of those out. Do you go to some of the soccer complexes?
No, I don't go to soccer complexes, not since my children were that high.
Okay, so you need to check some of those out, because that's very popular. Have you been to any pickleball courts and seen who's doing that?
No, I don't have any, any interest in playing games.
So that's some of the stuff they're working on as well, is trying to get tourism...
Oh, boy, I'm impressed.
And sports.
Okay.
You're just giving, you're just giving money to your buddies so they can rip us off and base the taxes for 25 years.
We don't do the tax abatements. It's a city thing.
Yes.
Well, you're giving money to the people.
They're the ones that approve that.
You're the people that put it in, that give them the money to go do that.
We didn't put it anywhere. They request it. It goes through the task force.
I think it's lousy. I think you're not doing a job.
We, we agree to disagree. I think we can sit here and we can argue.
I got all day.
I do, too.
Well, I, I...
We've probably reached the point that we're not putting any light on, on anything.
No.
I can see your position, and I fully expected it, because dishonest people support dishonest people. And the chamber people are about as dishonest and liar, big liars as they get. You yourself said that there's no strip joints as the chamber so thoroughly promised.
You know, back in the day, what they were talking about on the West End?
What?
I've got people right now that still would like to see some kind of zoning, because you have container houses that some people don't necessarily like, even though they're done fairly nice on the ones that I'm talking about. You've got empty car lots or salvage yards in places that zoning could be taken care of, some of this stuff. So unfortunately, that's the answer I get to give them is, we voted zoning down, that's not what the people wanted, and it was voted on. So we didn't push anything through. How's that dishonested? We asked them to vote on it, they voted on it, that's where we are.
Would you like, would you like to hear some dishonesty in the, in the county zoning campaign?
Sure.
The city and county, county, I guess, Mark Ellinger engaged Mark White from Kansas City on the Kansas side, and they gathered a group of people, citizens, and it was a public meeting, and they had posters on the wall with lists of what your biggest concern is. Put a sticker by your biggest concern. One of them was private use, private, protection of private property. I believe that was the one that got the most votes. Where was, what happened to the report? It just disappeared. I called the attorney. "Oh, you're kidding? You on fads? Oh, well, some of the stickers are all fell off, and we're not going to report that." It was a dirty trick. And it was just a miracle that Cole County voters, and I think I was involved in that some, and I think that's the most significant thing I've ever done, turned out to vote down the real estate agents like you and the Chamber of Commerce members like you, kept a planning and zoning commission off, destroyed. And the chamber was way behind that. They gave $5,000 to the campaign. The National Realtors Association in Chicago gave 10,000, and a bunch of hangers zones and banks and some of the building people gave another 5,000. And it was beaten, destroyed by people who, like myself, who just did a little bit. So I don't think the chamber was in touch with the people to be zoned. And I don't care what anybody says, the whole goal of that was to give people like yourself control of county property. And that's what you're continuing to do.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Williams.
You're through. You need to talk.
We have, we have a motion and a second on the floor to sign the agreement with the Jefferson City Regional Economic Partnership.
Why was that? Why are you going to sign it? Hell, she was to renew zoning, I guess. Why are you going to, well, you're one of, one of them, though. You're going to vote for it. I think Commissioner Otto is, too. Your resume, when you came, announced your candidacy for commission, was mostly your, your Chamber of Commerce.
No, it wasn't.
There was plenty of it.
It wasn't mostly Chamber of Commerce. You're wrong.
Why, what was it?
It talked about, like, Missouri Society of CPAs, the American Institute of CPAs, the Lions Club, the St. Mary's Foundation, on and on, Safety Net.
Did you, did you mention Chamber of Commerce?
I did.
Yes.
Well, you said mostly. You know, you came out with a, a letter to the editor after I filed. You called me a prince of the chamber.
Uh-huh.
You called me a disciple of the chamber.
Uh-huh.
And you said, "People should vote for people who are honest and unselfish."
Uh-huh.
And Otto is neither one of those.
Okay.
So...
And you've shown it to be true?
In your opinion.
Yes, in my opinion. I guarantee it's in my opinion.
I call for the question.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Thank you, Mr. Williams.
You're really welcome.
Okay, signing of agreement with Cole County Soil and Water.
Not yet, Nick. Not yet, Nick. So loud.
This is the annual agreement with soil and water. It's been budgeted for 5,000. It's statuteually required, so.
Okay. Good. Okay. Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Purchase agreement from Outdoor Warning Consultants.
I knew I was up there at some point.
You should have just kept going and grabbed a seat, warmed it up. This is what you emailed us about the other day that we were approved for.
Yes, there, there has been, what I've noticed in the agreement that they sent me originally, it did not include all of our batteries, because we're replacing the batteries in the county. And so I had them amend that, so it did include the batteries. And it appears as if our, what we put in budget for this was, the grant approved 42,364, but it appears as if there's been an increase from the 35,269 to 38,745, meaning we'll be at a shortfall of $1,290 from what we originally put into our budget. And so I would ask that we amend that budget and then approve the purchase agreement, if I can do that.
So we're getting more money, right, from the grant?
We're, no, the grant is set at 42,364, yet the ask from the purchase agreement is $1,290 more than that.
So that's for 44, two-something?
I'd have to get my calculator.
No, 40, 43, six, some change.
That sounds right.
Okay. I thought you were just saying we were getting more money from the grant.
I wish.
When you get a pat on the back, so.
I think building costs is what this is. Their initial, they gave this, the initial quote was from November, and now the agreement coming in March, I think building costs have just changed.
Didn't say anything, how long they would honor those prices?
I don't see that on here. Oh, I'm sorry. I don't know.
It may only be a 30, or not a 30, a three-month or a 90-day deal, too.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see where they've indicated that. It does talk about shipping and additional costs if they hit rock, things like that, but that's...
This is one going, Eugene?
At Honey Creek, yeah.
Honey Creek, Brazito, Honey Creek area.
Yep.
Okay.
And it also covers the 11 sites that we have to replace batteries within the county.
And we have to replace them, or they, do they die, or do we just replace them at a certain time? I forget. Sorry, Nick.
It's, it's every three to four years, it's recommended replacement, and then they do quarterly checks. No, I think, yeah, it's quarterly checks, to make sure that the batteries and the system itself is in good working order.
So if you just approve the purchase agreement, then I'll send you a transfer for the $1,290.
Okay. Covers the batteries and the new siren?
Yes.
I had to say one.
You're good, you're good.
All right. I just, I don't know, when we put these grants in, then we ask for the money, usually we have something that's a solid bid, so. But I know what construction costs have done, too, lately, so I'm, I'm all right with it, then.
And all things considered, you know, we're getting a heck of a deal, and we're only paying less than $2,000 for a siren and replacement for 11 units.
Unless the woodpeckers get to it.
That's right. Hopefully, we fix that.
That still blows my mind.
I'm sorry, these free things tend to not be free, so I'm, I'm fine with that. I misread your email. I thought we were getting more money.
Are you referring to the Eastern District Woodpeckers?
Yeah. Most of them. All them peckerheads. What's wrong, Debbie?
I don't have a motion yet, I don't think, that we have a, we have a motion. I'd call for the question, but...
Okay. Make a motion to sign a purchase agreement from Outdoor Warning Consulting.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
All right, thank you all.
Welcome to the jungle.
I think we digress. Okay, we're going to scratch off the discussion and sign a media com agreement for Internet services at 209 Adams per Brian. So that is, that is off of there. Do we have any other issues?
Can we do accounts payable?
Yes.
We have P cards.
I think we did. Do, yes.
No.
Oh, we passed it. Okay.
I was wondering if maybe you just marked it off.
I didn't want to pay any, I didn't want to pay.
It's not much, just...
Accounts payable review.
I'd ask for approval of accounts payable pending review.
Motion to approve accounts payable pending review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And when's your birthday, Brian?
Brian.
Brian.
I mean, Eric, when's your, when's your birthday, Eric?
Tomorrow, and it's still my last birthday ever, 49.
Don't say that.
So are we having a party or anything?
Maybe last Friday, maybe.
Shamrock almost.
Ooh.
Yeah, so you notice the sheriff's not here today. It's the day after Pi Day, so I was kind of wanting to give him some grief about that. I did have, we got the letter from the auditor saying June 1st is her last day.
Yes.
We briefly talked about this, so then what is the process? You mentioned something about we have two weeks after that. We appoint them, or the governor appoints?
The governor could appoint someone that the next day. If the governor doesn't appoint someone within 14 days, the commission shall appoint an interim, not, not someone to complete the term, but an interim auditor. And then the governor, the governor has 60 days to appoint someone to complete the term.
Okay.
Which would be through 12/31. So it, it could be that the governor will appoint someone immediately, and we won't have to pull the 14-day trigger as a commission. That's possible.
I guess just some of my concern is we've got personnel changing up there in addition to the auditor herself. And we need to get somebody in there.
Agreed.
To have a little bit of overlap. So I guess we need to...
I called the governor's office yesterday. Now, they were all, the clerk, doing his duty, has already notified the governor's office officially that there will be a resignation effective June 1. So the governor's office is aware of their need to make an appointment. And with this much head start, maybe they'll have that person ready.
So if we requested it, could we get somebody here two weeks before she's gone?
If we knew who the appointment was, well, but then again, it's, it's our duty to, to keep that office, or it's actually the auditor's duty to keep that office staffed initially. The, the requirements for a deputy are the same as the requirements for the auditor by state law, and the requirements for an auditor is someone familiar with the theory of accounting by education, experience, and training. So it's not a job for everybody or anybody.
Well, we need to work with the auditor, maybe, to get somebody in the position of deputy auditor to be able to overlap that.
Correct.
I think this happened before with one George Brooks, and I think it happened with the assessor, so.
Well, we can always have Debbie train whoever it is. Okay, well, that being my point is, I don't want Debbie taking an early retirement if we throw all this stuff.
Debbie isn't my point anywhere.
Finance office, so.
Debbie isn't my point anywhere.
And I haven't really had a chance to visit with Kristen about it at all. She had somebody in mind, maybe, to fill the deputy's place, you know, to help with something like that. So I just wanted to bring it up, and we need to be thinking about it, so.
Yes.
I don't know, you've had some ideas, and we can kind of kick them around.
We might have a closed session, just...
No.
We can't? No. Okay.
Personnel.
It's not your personnel.
Could be.
That's up to the auditor, though. If the auditor's in the building.
But if she brings somebody to us and wants to call, could I have a closed session?
Well, because it's current performance, I don't know. I'm just saying, this would be the auditor's decision, and she can always speak with you individually.
Unless it's closed session. I mean...
I'd say we can do it in a closed session on the personnel, I mean, it's kind of like job attorneys.
Attorney-client.
If we want to talk to a couple of people about jumping in and helping.
Well, that's because we've got ethics confidentiality.
We got lots of ethics.
We do?
Not you.
I was, I was speaking to Jill.
Those of us with licenses catch a deer to the stand.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Anything else?
What do we add on the ARPA thing, then? Are we going to talk about what's going to happen after April 15th? No, it's April 15?
Yeah, I think it's April 15.
Okay.
So far, we've had three applicants through the website.
It's not an application form.
No, no.
Accessible needs.
Yes.
Sorry, sorry. So we've had three forms turned in so far. It's not slated to do anything until the close of that, unless you want to do anything in between. And it's kind of going to be hard to just look at the first ones first. I mean, it's up to you. I mean, it's a whole picture.
I think we need to decide how we're going to do it. Once April 15th gets here, are we going to sit down as an advisory group and rank them, or what we're going to do? Because we've, I thought, did you get the email about the, okay, about the grid that we did for Saw Waste District? So, I mean, I think that's a good starting point. Maybe we do have a meeting with the advisory board to see what kind of categories you want to have, what should be weighted more. Do we do bonus points? Do we have a minimum score required?
And sooner than later, we do need to discuss the sheriff and the EMS. Request.
Did you see, did that go to everyone, that RFI?
Yeah, I sent it.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Have you seen that RFI from DED? Was it DED?
Yes. I sent it to you.
Request for information, the state's asking political subdivisions, do you have something you need funded or funding help on? And there's a couple of things that we should maybe explore. Among them, Heartland Port Authority. I mean, there are MoDOT grants that we're using over there for that.
That we would have to use match money from our ARPA funds?
Well, it didn't really say match.
Okay.
I don't think it even said match.
No, there's no match.
No.
They just, they just want to know what we see as needs.
And it's called their, an RFI, Request for Information, so it's not even really a request for funds necessarily at this point.
Got that last week?
Right. Right.
So, man, we need to...
It's due Fri, it's due Friday.
Okay, so we need to get that filled out.
I think I could pull some numbers together with respect to Heartland, that we should just push that way.
Do we want to push the sheriff EMS?
Well, we can...
Can we do stormwater?
No.
No, that's, no.
Read it, Sam, there are certain categories...
Okay, I don't, yeah, I don't have it. Okay, I'm just, yeah.
There's workforce development.
Okay.
There's, well, Harry, the port authority is under industrial...
Yeah, industrial sites. And, you know, we were looking on that, at that multimodal thing, but there's already a grant application in place for that, isn't there?
Yeah.
There, yeah, for 1.5 million.
Yeah.
But I mean, we still need to decide what we want to do with the advisory board and at what capacity we want them to help with once we get the needs assessment forms in. So we're looking at the needs assessment, then we tell people, you're eligible, you're not eligible, now you have to fill an application, and then...
I think we, we kind of lean on our advisory board to help us there.
That was kind of my thought, too, is to help rank them. And then we, you know, that advisory board could then make their recommendations, and ultimately, it still comes up to our votes on.
True. Yeah, I mean, we are the final decision makers on that.
So we need to work on getting some kind of scoring rubric together or something on that, and kind of like we did with the needs assessment form. We can do that with emails, I would think. So maybe have one meeting where we, you know, finalize it if we need to, but... Because it's going to be very subjective, and that's, that's where I think we need some, the advisory board to step in and give us some ideas, questions, concerns about different ones, so...
Well, the needs assessment deadline is the 8th of April, and then we had a meeting scheduled for the 12th to get back with the advisory committee. At that time, Melissa says through the application for the needs assessment forms online, she can do a spreadsheet of what all they filled out and who they are and stuff. So whether you want me to send that out after the 8th before the 12th...
I think we should let, we should let them know as soon as we have that in here so they can be looking at it and thinking about it for four days or three or four days. That'll give them a head start, so it won't be new to them when they show up for the meeting.
As far as coming up with a scoring mechanism, I think it's probably a little different now since it's a needs assessment versus an application. So I don't know if we're quite ready to do the scoring on that kind of stuff yet.
Okay, so then what happens after, so what's the needs assessment actually going to do? Tell us how many pots of money, buckets of money we want to sort them out into, or what?
It's going to give you an idea of what's out there in the community, what the needs are, and then, yes, in turn, where you guys want to put the money towards. In-house projects, out-house project, and what type of out-house. It's just, again, an initial take because there's going to be more things that come up over the years of where this will take us different places. So if you want, kind of like we did with Cares Money, if you wanted to spend some of it upfront, save some of it for changes that will happen, and save some of it for the end, that's totally going to be up to you guys.
So if you don't submit a needs assessment, application, form, whatever, then you can't apply for ARPA money later?
No, you can. It's just the first go-around as far as seeing what's out there right now that the public needs, in my mind. I mean, I don't know however you want to do it, but we called it the initial one, so I'm assuming there'll be more. And definitely, once you narrow it down, there's going to be an application, they have to answer certain questions, and they have to sign off on certain things. This one didn't, took a lot of those restrictions out that they didn't have to have to fill out, you know, like a federal ID number. You didn't have to have that right now just to find out what the needs are, but we will have to have that when they actually apply.
Okay. I'll just wait till April 8th, we'll see what we have. I just think we're going to have a lot more requests or needs than we're going to have money. I don't think we're going to have years of spending it. We're going to, we'll probably have plenty to do it upfront, so we'll just see.
Mm-hmm.
I think in the back of my mind, I think how we want to do the scoring and stuff, when we do get to that point, because I don't want to prolong it anymore, let's get it and run with it. I've been on too many other committees, and, well, let's just table it and do it next meeting and stuff, and then pretty soon, nothing's getting done, so it's just aggravating, so...
And like you said, if you want this to be some big investment, you know, within the community that will last for five, 10, 20 years from now, then that may be a big part of how you score them, how you rank them, kind of thing.
Yep.
And we have a request like that already.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? Yes?
You want off tomorrow, don't you?
No, I got, I got work to do, I got a chamber meeting.
You want off the day after your birthday because you might be celebrating?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
No. Real quick, we had a pipe failure out at Thaden Park, I'm not sure if you're aware of that. It's on the, kind of the backside of the park, it's a pipe that drains from the street. So it's caved in, and we've fenced off the area. Probably when we fix it, we'll have to close the park. So when you see that come through on a news release, that's what that's about. Not a, not a huge, huge deal, but it's enough of a safety concern that we needed to fence off the area where it's collapsed in a, along a walkway. And then the second, Jeff, you had emailed this morning about the building inspection and having the city help us out while Pat's out on leave, and I got an email back from them, we'll get an agreement together and hopefully bring that to you all next week. And this would just be an agreement with the city to have them fill in the gaps when we need a little help with Pat out and Mark being part-time. We've got to be a little careful not to overwork Mark because he is a 1,000-hour employee.
Okay.
So, and then that kind of leads into maybe something to think for the future as Mark gets a little closer to final retirement, and then Pat as well. We need to think long-term about possibly bringing in, hiring somebody to kind of train under them for the date that they fully retire.
Has Pat announced any?
No, he's...
He'll never retire.
I don't, I don't think he will.
I don't think so, I...
But I know Mark, at some point, you know, he said he doesn't want to, you know, at some point, he'll want to just fully retire, so we need to be thinking about that long-term. So I'll keep you all informed as things change.
Then we've got the email about Tanner Bridge.
Yes.
Construction, is that going to be, are they going to be closing it at some point completely, or is it...
It's to rebuild the road, it has to close. Now it'll be local traffic only where somebody living...
Like we did at Terra Road, so...
Similar, yes.
Okay, well, there's different routes around that, to, you know, through, off of 179 or Tanner Bridge.
Take Route B over to the spur. Yeah.
Friendship, so, okay.
Yeah, we'll work, work it kind of like we did Terra Road.
Okay. Well, that went pretty flawlessly anyways, so...
Yeah, this, this will be a quick project. It's got a short...
So it's probably going to be a little busier through Wardsville.
Yeah, I would expect so. At least for the, I don't know, it might not even be a month that it's actually down, maybe less. It just depends on how quick they can get in there and build the road and stage things around. There will be a time that it has to close just to tie everything in.
They're doing the entrance to Grand Highlands at the same time, too, right?
Yes.
Okay. Good.
Okay.
Thanks.
I need to talk to you after, maybe, too.
Okay.
I think that's all I had.
Okay, anything else?
Motion to stand in recess until 4:30.
Second.